Okay, good evening. I call this meeting to order. It's March 12th, 2025, and this is the meeting of the Carbondale Colorado Parks and Recreation Commission. We are an advisory commission made up of volunteers to assist and consult with town staff and make recommendations to our town officials. My name is Hollis Sutherland and I'm Honorary Service Commission Chair for this year. I'm joined by my fellow volunteers Vice Chair Drew Sorensen, Ashley Hatmanek, Leslie Keery, Eric Lamb, Rachel Bachman Perkins, Susan Ray, Rose Rosello, and our Youth Commissioner, Liza Logan. We are joined by our tremendous Carbondale staff, Eric Brenlinger, our Parks and Recreation Director, Margaret Donley, our outgoing, outgoing last meeting, well unless she comes next month, Community Center and Recreation Programs Manager, and our outgoing Kay McDonald, who has just done so wonderful job of taking minutes for us and being replaced in welcoming, Ally Weinstein as our board and wines, I said it wrong, didn't I?
Wetstein.
Wetstein. I'm sorry. Our, our new board and commissions clerk, Erica Sparhawk is our Board of Trustees liaison, and we welcome anyone who may be watching live or via recording. Thank you for participating in your local government. As a commission, we strive to serve the town of Carbondale by setting aside personal biases and looking at what's best for our community. We honor diverse opinions, promote inclusivity, and endeavor to keep our discourse civil and respectful. We will get started by reviewing and approving the minutes. Does everyone had a chance to take a look at any edits, comments, clarifications? Okay, is there a motion? Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I don't think we have any citizens on the agenda.
For the record, I'd like to point out that Kay does more than just keep, has done more than just keep the minutes. She also informs us a lot of city issues, town issues, and policies, and links to all the other commissions that we're not all present for all the time. So she's just been an incredible resource. Thank you.
Well, there's some splash dashes over at Avon in Nottingham Lake, so.
Okay. Well, Kay, I want to personally thank you for, you know, filling in when, and working two jobs and doing everything else. I mean, your minute taking has kept me so clear and on track of what happened during the meeting. I can't, I can't tell you how much I appreciate all that. So thank you so much.
Oh, it's right here. Stalled out. Everybody get a sign. Okay, we have a car for you. Margaret, we have a car. Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
That's pretty cool. Yeah, sorry. Okay, let me take it.
You're sitting here?
You are free to go.
You are free to go!
You do not have to say for the rest of this meeting something about the door hitting her.
That's the good part. That's the good part. Yeah. Okay. Okay, when did you want to recognize Margaret?
I'm coming next month.
No, we do want to thank Margaret for her years of service. You know, when Margaret was hired, how many years ago now?
Eight.
Eight.
No, Eric, come on. I, I started working November 15th, 2014.
Wow, okay. I can't do the math. Yeah, no, amazing. But we, we hired her on and we threw her at the pool project, you know. We just said, you're running this thing, good luck, have fun with your, have fun with your island and, and come to me if anything, you know, doesn't work. And she was back in my office in about 10 minutes.
Started draining the pool. I couldn't figure it.
So, but she did a great job for, for years as our aquatics coordinator. And then her, her focus was also fitness too, and, and really took our fitness to a new level at the rec center and really, you know, you know, was trained in Silver Sneakers, really got our Silver Sneakers program going, and was able to teach a lot of classes, train a lot of other instructors, really bumped up all of our, our class numbers there. And, and it's still going to this day. It's, I mean, you know, it's still a very popular program. All of our fitness is very popular. Margaret really built that up. And she is a, whenever, you know, we have a pool question, we're gonna come talk to Margaret because she had that internal knowledge and that experience, experiential knowledge of our, our previous pool. And, and she'll have to come back and some point swim in our new pool because that'll be a good experience for you too, to actually swim in a functioning pool. So that would be good. But thank you for the years of service, and it's been a great joy to work with you.
Oh, my sister's calling.
That was like, that was like great timing. Have a little music going. Just a little mood music. So we all give her a hug. Yeah, deep thoughts with Eric Brenlinger.
Can I get her the card now?
Yes.
Look at this, look at this card. It is pretty cool.
It's gonna be framed and go on my wall. For anybody who's seen my office. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Margaret, for everything you've done. I know that whenever I've needed anything, it seems like I've been able to go right to you and you're organized. And, you know, if you don't have an answer for me, you're like, I'll get right on it and you get to it. And your staff seems happy. And, you know, the facility is really well run and everything you've done. So you're gonna be very, very missed.
Thank you.
And I want to come visit you.
Okay. Anybody is welcome at any time.
Hey, maybe we should have a meeting over there.
Our Parks tour in June got a little bit bigger.
It's got a little bigger. Do you think we have some money in the budget for some airline tickets?
It's this chartering of planes.
From a kid's side of things too, I want to say thank you from all of our schools that you've brought programs into forever, trained incredible lifeguards, kept us all safe from hundreds and hundreds of families going there for programs over the summers in the old pool. So from all of us at all of our schools, thank you so, so much. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And enjoy my house.
He's renting your house?
Nice.
Nice. I'll check on him. Make sure it's.
We'll make sure he gets through.
Oh, there you go.
That'd be awesome.
We'll zoom you in. Yeah, it'll be like, what, in the middle of the night or something? Oh, great.
No, it'd actually be perfect. It's six hours difference right now, so.
Oh, well, there you go. You could have a Bloody Mary then.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Thanks for all your service, Margaret.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah. And to celebrate not only, you know, outgoing Margaret and Kay, but recent birthdays, got a cake here. If you'd like some, I'm gonna cut some and I'll pass around the bowl with a piece of it.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, let me know. Can I just get a head count, just a general idea? Who'd like some?
What do we got?
It's a, it's a strawberry cream pie.
Oh.
Have we got one?
Very good. Okay. All right, let's see. Onto busy pool.
We're gonna have Cynthia Colbrun come up and, oh, you don't have a chair though.
I know. I've never presented from the podium before. Don't forget to turn on the mic. Susan, turn around your name tag. We know.
There isn't a thing on this one.
Is it on? Okay. Okay. So perhaps you know from your packet, I'm not sure, but gifts and pledges to date or as of Monday stood at $1,583,410, or another way of saying that is just over $900,000 still to go. So that sounds to me a lot better than a million still to go. And thank you to all of you for being contributors to it. We do now have 100% participation from this commission, from the cabinet members, and from the trustees. So that's really important in fundraising, that the leadership is behind it, and so that'll help in the marketing efforts. You maybe have already seen some of the marketing campaign that was recently launched. We're doing social media posts because we were aware of several questions that the community seems to have, like, why is construction proceeding if funding isn't complete? And is construction behind schedule? No, in fact, you'll hear from Eric that it's slightly ahead of schedule. But just general questions that people have had are getting addressed. And the multiple channels, I think is the right word, for these promotions to raise awareness and to attract donations include paid social media posts, paid advertising in local newspapers, and on KDNK. We've been getting a lot of testimonials from donors about why they gave and using those with their photographs on social media, and also in a, you, you were sent the new trifold brochure. So there's a couple of them in that. We're encouraging certain town leaders or donors to send letters to the editor with, you know, op-ed pieces to promote why it's important. We're, of course, trying to place feature stories in the local papers. That trifold that you were sent is being sent in a couple of days, along with a remittance envelope, to 3,500-81623 households. It won't have a letter with it. It's just a self-evident request to contribute. And because we realized on a marketing team call this morning that that list was not cross-checked with the donor list, I'm not sure we even had that capability since it was a purchase list through a mailhouse and through the post office. So we're sending an email, it went out today, in fact, you may have already seen it, to say, thank you again for donating, and you're about to get a remittance envelope and a trifold brochure. But because we weren't able to cross-check it, please pass it on to your family members, or your neighbors, or your professional colleagues, or whomever to help spread the word. And, you know, essentially apologies for donors getting another ask. So that hopefully will clear that up. We also have the monthly campaign newsletter, presumably you're all getting that, but this month's issue, which is going out any minute, is featuring Margaret and encouraging people. I know, she doesn't like to be lauded, but it's really trying to leverage the enormous impact that she's had in Carbondale, particularly in Parks and Rec, to encourage people to give because of her and because of her contributions to Carbondale and to the pool. And so hopefully you'll enjoy the interview with her, and hopefully we'll get a good response both to that newsletter that Parks and Rec, well, that it's a campaign newsletter, separate from the rec newsletter, but that from that and from the direct mail, we hope to start getting an uptick in contributions. We're going to be resuming the booths soon. Any of you would be welcome to volunteer at those. We're going to be doing them at all the first Fridays, April, May, June, July. We'll also be doing them again in front of businesses. We have to confirm a couple of, that we have in mind to do. I mean, Kiko Peña has offered for us to do one at Soopers Liquor and Wine, which we'll do on a Friday afternoon when there's high traffic. We just have to set the date and we. Brian has set out some calendar things. Calendar invitations. I know, a couple of them were a little premature. Oh, so they're, those aren't the accurate dates? Well, some are, but for instance, the one about a pool party at the Smithy, I think, was one of them sent. We haven't confirmed that yet. No, it was just, there were three he sent. One was, and I don't know who he sent it to. Did he, did any of you guys get them? No? Oh, he's, he sent them to the cabinet members. They were the first Friday things and then the Soopers Liquor one? Right. And the Soopers Liquor one is the one that hadn't been confirmed. So. Oh, okay, so that. So I'm not sure. I, I don't think, did it have a date? Yeah. Okay, well. And it wasn't the March one that we had talked about. Well, maybe he talked to Kiko. I don't, I'm not sure. I'll have to check on that. Okay. And so is it all right with each of you if you get the confirmation of an upcoming booth to just see if you're available to potentially volunteer? Is that okay? Because we would send it to cabinet members, but would like to send it to all of you too, just in case, you know, thank you, Ashley. Just in case you'll be there and could help with the volunteering. And especially the one in April, I think it is, because Brian is completely booked because it's spring into wellness. Spring into wellness. So he'll be totally doing the rec center, and so the pool booth will have to be other than Brian that night. That's April 4th. Okay. 5:00 PM.
Drew, you didn't invite us?
Oh, I thought maybe it was celebrating, you know, Margaret's house, moving into Margaret's house or something like that. Way to kick it off.
I'll be there, Drew.
Anyway, I'll be at the first Friday thing. And so other events that we'll be doing for the pool campaign, we'll still be trying to get pool parties launched. And Kiko suggested that Marble Distillery isn't still open for its regular bar hours, but it's a still available space potentially. He was going to ask the owners about hosting something like what he hosted, the Speakeasy at Soopers Liquor and Wine. And I think that may be a good idea to pursue, to have invited people come and do a group pitch there with significant pledges announced, as we did at the Speakeasy. If you're not familiar, I could explain it if anyone has a question. So that's my report. Any questions?
How much do you want from bank?
15,000 over two years, which is nice. And we've been trying to leverage the fact that Rebecca Lodge pledged 10,000. We've been trying to use that with the banks. Will you match the thrift store? But not always with success. So, thank you. All right. Well, thanks for coming tonight. Thank you for having me.
What else is in your package? Just on the pool report is a four-year, I mean, sorry, four-week schedule. And so this is the document that's being produced by A.D. Miller, our contractor, that kind of really shows you, you know, not only the week we're in, or right now, it's been, it's the week, last week, what happened last week, but it shows you a projection of the next three weeks beyond that. And so, so you can just take a look at that. They did pour entertainment pool walls. So they're letting that concrete cure. Now, this week, they are stripping all the forms and starting on excavation of the backwash tank and the building foundation for the bathhouse. So, so that's all happening this week. And then they'll form and rebar base for the backwash tank. So those, those two things right there kind of put them ahead of schedule by almost six weeks. So, you know, it's good to be ahead of schedule always with a project like this because, you know, in one day you can be behind schedule too, when, when other things happen, or you don't get, you know, supply and demand that, you know, doesn't arrive, some, you know, part, you know, equipment doesn't arrive or something, you know, because it's delayed. So, so they are, they're cranking over there and everything looks to be going pretty well. And we are, you could see in your report that I gave you, it was last month, so sorry about that. I chose the wrong one when I attached it. But I made a paper copy of Wember's report for this month. I did the same to the trustees too. So thank you for catching that. Erica, Erica caught that and gave us call and said, hey, do you guys, you have last month's in there?
I'm seeing a little.
Yeah. So, so what you're not, sorry, what you're not seeing on this one is all the photos. But, so I can, I can email that to everybody too, just so you have a backup of all the photos that's attached to this. It's about 20 pages of photos, so I didn't print it off. But so some, some decisions, you know, have been made, just due to the fact that, that the change orders are coming at us pretty quick and, and fast now. We, we did have a couple of things that we, we, we needed to decide on fairly quick to not, not put us behind schedule and also for ordering of, of product. So we, we looked at, one of the big, big changes really was looking at site lighting and site security. And so those two things, we really spent quite a bit of time on, looked at what had been value engineered out early on in the project, and really looked comprehensively at what we needed as far as visuals from security cameras covering the whole property. So that did, did make some, that's why it became a change order. We, we needed to bring that back in when we're looking at the long-term security of this property. And, and with Brian on board, who has a lot of pool experience, he's like, we need, we need to see the whole pool, you know, on these security cameras and from, from all angles. And it makes total sense to me. Can't have a blind spot in those cameras, in, in the pools. And so, so we did, we did go back to the drawing board there. They, they did put together a, a good, you know, change order for us. And we pulled the trigger on that because we just feel like we needed. It's a safety issue. So we also looked at what got value engineered out of the project early on was lights in the entertainment pool. And so we, we brought those back in because it, we started to look at operational shoulder season uses of the pool. And without those lights, we, we really felt that it could tie our hands for future programming of the space. So, so we brought those back in to the project and, and signed off on that, that change order also. So the other piece I wanted to kind of cover with that is where we sit on grant writing and grant funding right, right now. So we have been talking to Core and have kind of presented our project to them. That's the Community Office for Resource Efficiency. They are, they have funding capabilities now in, not only in Picken County, but in Garfield County too. And so they are interested in funding some projects down here. They, they like the energy efficiency piece of our project. They, we're gonna be writing a grant to them for the, the solar panels. So I'm specific to that piece of the project. We resubmitted the T-Mobile grant. We, it's a quarterly offering by T-Mobile. So we're putting it back in, you know, 50,000. Yep. So, and we, we did finish up the, the Environmental Foundation Grant for the SkiCo this week. The other grant that's due this week, that's been grant-heavy week, is with the Gates Family Foundation. So, so we'll be, and that's a common grant application, which sounds simple, but it's still pretty, yeah, big lift. Yeah. So, so I'm working on that one. That's due Friday. So that's where we kind of sit with looking at potential grants for the pool project. So we're getting some more grant asks out, at least. We'll see what happens. At least we know we're, we're at the table. So, yeah, I think that's about it for the pool, pool project. Any questions?
Yeah. One question, looking at the PCO number two from the change orders, that's a, it's a really large number. Was that, like, it looks like it has to do with irrigation and something about like water systems? Was that not originally budgeted for? Or was it slightly off what was estimated or like from the get-go? Can you tell me more about that one?
Yeah, sure. So the original design of the irrigation was actually a, an in-ground system, not a pop-up head spray system like we have in all of our other parks. And they had originally thought that it was a reuse of the backwash water. You'd have to then re-treat it and then use it for irrigation on-site due to code. We, we looked really hard at that and said, hold on, why are we putting in an irrigation system that we have no knowledge of? We have no, it's totally different than any of our other irrigation systems in the entire town. You know, it didn't make sense. We have water rights right here out of the ditch. They didn't think we did originally. So that's, that was part of the issue. They needed to figure out how to use, you know, potable water there. And, and so we do have water rights out of ditch. And so to do that though, you know, we needed to change the entire irrigation system that was designed. So part, part of this was already, you know, allocated out. But we thought we were gonna save money with that. We didn't because we needed a holding tank that was large enough to not have that backwash water into, into our stormwater drainage system at a rate that, that, that they couldn't handle. And, and so, so we had to, we actually talked to the water department and went through quite a process to figure out what type of rate was doable, you know, because we have three bodies of water now, gonna be backwashing three bodies of water. It's a lot, much larger volume of water. We're gonna be backwashing in our old pool. So we needed to equate our release of that water to what the system could handle from the old pool. And so that's, that's where we, we ended up with. But that's why the tank grew, because it had to store all this water. And so that's really, and then we looked at prefab tanks, we looked at other types of tanks that, that you could just buy, and the lead times were like almost two years on some of those. So we said, we, let's, 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 we can build it on-site and, and have it function and not have, not put the project way behind.
I see. And that $354,000, is that far off of what the original estimate was for the, the tanks? Like, if it's coming out of this contingency, is it, is it cutting into some reserves that we might need to be wary of?
No, I mean, it ate a big chunk. We had about $600,000 in contingency to start with, and it, it's a big.
So it ate a big chunk of that. Okay.
And, you know, we had a big, big contingency because we were really worried about the excavation cost. And we didn't, we didn't have full data on what was underneath there as far as what type of soil. We tried to drill holes and they only got down like Um, we tried to drill holes and they only got down like three feet. So, and until the, they couldn't, they were doing that during our pools in operation then. So, so they, they couldn't, you know, go come and actually bring a big rig in and drill down. So we were really worried about, um, you know, soils that we potentially were gonna run into. And we did run into some clay and sand that had to be mitigated, um, but it was just a small piece in the entertainment pool. So we got pretty lucky there.
So maybe save some money there, but at a cost here. Optimistic that the contingency won't be exhausted before the end of the project?
We are, that's why we're fundraising like Matt, cause, yeah.
You never know.
Cause, yeah, cause the, uh, you know, I, I think with a couple of these changes and a couple of our stuff that we value engineering it out and then, and really taking a hard look at and how, are putting it back in the project, you know, because it's needed. Um, for the long-term, you know, health of this project. And so I think the contingency will definitely be spent. And so, so we still have a hole to build the project as designed. And that's why we're writing grants and fundraising still, so.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yep.
Um, I have a question about clarification about the security stuff. Um, so this will be security cameras on the perimeter or we're looking at graffiti to the building or what? In the pool?
Yeah, so they're gonna be, how, we did that, we had some site lighting. And so we were attaching the cameras to actually the site lighting. And so those, so we added just a, and they'll be on the building looking at the pool and then on the other, on the south end of the project looking back. For just to cover all that water space. So we'll, we'll.
They're looking for people trying to sneak in or looking for people doing damage? Or will it see both?
Well, a couple of things, like let's say you have an incident, alright, and, and you wanna see how and when your lifeguard's reacted. You know, you wanna, you wanna see, you know, why the incident happened. You know, if it's a near drowning or something, you wanna, you want some, some evidence and some, some taped backup to what happened there. Well, and, and, you know, that, that too, I think, I think that would help too. And, and that is a piece of it, you know, we wanna have a secure, gotta have a, you're, you're mandated to have a secure, you know, fence around the pool. To make sure it's, yeah, not porous, so.
Isn't the pool, um, the, the recreation pool, entertainment pool expected to be used for private events after hours?
Um, could, could be, you know, we don't, you know, we don't know the future uses of, of those spaces. So we're just trying to really plan them so they, they could be, you know, there's a big, there's always a, a neat thing that happens at private pools and some public pools, you know, the, the floating movies and, you know, there's all sorts of different activities that, that could take place there, so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it would seem lights in there would be useful?
Yeah. Yeah, and even, even for, um, an outdoor pool, um, with reflection from the sun, it's, it's kind of nice to not have dark, darkness in, in the corners of the pool. It's kind of nice to have light in, in the pool. And we didn't before and, and, and it's.
It's hard. It gets hard.
Yeah, you have to train your eye to see it differently, I think so. We had them video this mountain functional, right?
No, we never.
Never had it.
Nothing else on the pool? Okay. Chacos, Eric, wanna bring us up to date on that?
Yeah, so, um, I, I did include our land and.
By the way, the conceptual is only one page. I don't see anything else other than a list of people. The conceptual design to construction, it just has a list of who's doing what kind of thing, but I, I don't see any conceptual designs. Were you supposed to?
It's the second attachment.
Interesting, okay. Yeah, sorry, you guys didn't get, um, and that was, hmm, I wonder what happened with that. Okay. Sorry about that. That was actually, uh, supposed to be, uh, Monica Science, who's doing the, uh, sign production and installation. It was their technique of how they're gonna install, so sorry. You did miss that. Oh, no, sorry.
They were gonna install what?
Oh, sorry, I'm in the wrong one. Oh, no. Okay, sorry, I'm, I'm back.
Need some more sugar?
I was jumping ahead of myself. Yeah, so, no, that's all that's supposed to be there. So, um, this is the team that's, that, uh, R E One put together um, to take this project from, uh, from conceptual design to design documents. So that is, that is what's in our budget for two thousand twenty-five. And to do that work, um, and so, so we had, uh, R E One will be the, um, you know, the contractor on this, the landscape design contractor. And he built the team, Nicholas DeFrank, built that team, um, to take, take it into that next step to construction documents, so. So that's what, that's the effort that'll be happening this year. So I did want you to see who is gonna be involved with, with that next phase of the project, um, which is that, that team right there. So that's all, that's all that was included there. Um, the, uh, what I wanted to talk about is just, and we hadn't shared this yet, but, you know, we did a, a big effort, big lift to, um, get a grant in, uh, to Land and Water Conservation Fund. And so, uh, on February tenth, they did come back to us and, uh, we didn't get it. Um, and they gave us kind of, this is the scoring, um, you know, matrix that they, they used. So we were close. Um, but, but didn't get it, so. So I just wanted to share that with you. So, um, so that it kind of provided, uh, you know, general application comments down below, just, you know, where, where we were missing, um, according to the, the grant reviewers. And so good public outreach, um, you know, good, they like really supported thing of, uh, we used to be a private piece of land, uh, and bring it into the public fold. Um, they liked the story, how, how that happened, um, exemplifies escort priority. Small community number of people that would benefit, including schools, quite impressive. Couple of things we got dinged on, how this, this structure should be maintained over time. So that was one of their concerns that we didn't answer well enough, I guess, in the process. Um, and the other one was, you know, um, is this, you know, mainly recreational, outdoor recreational park? Or is it more of a, it's kind of a community events park? And so we kind of got dinged on that one. I mean, we can't really change that. We, we talked about its use as a, as a downtown ice rink. We talked about its use, you know, for other, uh, events. And we talked about how the, uh, the, um, water play features, if that gets built in, you know, would be this outdoor recreation draw, you know, water play. So we, we, uh, we are gonna talk to them again, you know, maybe there's, there's an opportunity to, um, go back to them with a, with an enhanced and better, better grant. So we'll, we'll see if that's, if that's possible. Um, and they only grant once a year. Um, the, the other piece I wanted to share with you was the.
Eric, can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah.
Like, based on what you submitted to them about how to care for things, um, what were they, what are they looking for? Like a maintenance schedule, um, replacement schedule, uh, were the funding for the, you don't know?
Cause, you know, the part of the grant is showing them, um, you know, what we do maintain, our budgets, you know, obviously you show them all your budgets. You show that there's maintenance dollars annually allocated to our park system, so we're not sure.
Okay.
And those would be some of the questions, um, we can ask him, you know, when we kind of talk to him about, you know, the potential for reapply, so.
Okay.
And then.
This is the one that you had to apply before you start breaking ground, right?
Yeah.
So, can you reply?
Yeah, because, I mean, this, we, we, when we did the master plan, we wrote, um, three different time, timing scenarios. One was if we get the grant. You know, and the second one was, if we don't get the grant, then what does that timing look like to, for the project? And, uh, and, and then we did a third scenario where we actually looked at, um, you know, how do we break this up into pieces and, and actually, so you could work on exterior pieces and not break ground in the park until you go after another grant for the, and park specific, like all the infrastructure is, could be outside of the park-specific funding, so.
So you could do the, the, burying the power lines, that.
Yes, and that's actually slated as, um, the first, uh, thing that we, we wanna do in the park anyways, so. And so that is what's, um, in process right now. We're gonna be undergrounding all the overhead power there. Um, with Excel and, and the town has a, uh, has a, a slush fund that's been put into Excel, um, that, uh, that, that will pay for that process. So we just don't know how much it's gonna cost yet, but. So that's, that's what the Chacos Park overhead, um, power line for the undergrounding, uh, pieces. And so it kind of shows you the length and the distance, um, of what we're gonna underground, um, to start that, that process.
Well, would part of this infrastructure stuff be considered like pumps and all the other stuff for the water feature or or is that considered breaking ground?
Yeah, that, that would be, you know, breaking ground, so.
Okay.
Yeah. And.
So I wonder, could you get more mileage out of, you know, really pitching it as a recreation space? Do you think that would up the score? You weren't that far off, like point, point three?
Yeah.
Very close. Like, what about outdoor Tai Chi classes? You know, like, what about some rec center classes that take place in the park?
Yeah.
Um, cause it's close, you know, it's close to the rec center, why not?
Yeah.
Might give you a better chance next time. How big is the grant again?
Um, it's a million dollars.
Oh, yeah.
One point, yeah, it's worth, one, yeah.
It's, it's worth trying to get it again, for sure.
Yeah, and it's a one-to-one match, so that's why it's a challenging grant. So we, we have to show, produce one million too.
Hmm.
Um, but, you know, the master plan, that's what it's gonna cost us to build this park out.
Hmm.
You know, to match our master plan vision, so.
What if you had like panels that, that show people how to do different exercises that don't require any equipment? I don't know.
Nice, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
It might move the needle, point three?
Yeah. Yeah, you, you know, and, and, you know, we'll, we'll talk to them. I've not had a chance to talk to them, but we will talk to them about, you know, what, where our weaknesses were and, and we'll, we'll have a, you know, good conversation with them about, you know, about reapplying, you know, next year, cause, cause, you know, we, we, this is, this bought us a little time. We still have to do this other infrastructure project. We still have to do the design documents. So that's really two thousand twenty-five. And so we still haven't broken ground yet, so. That's the way I'm looking at it, so. So, and, you know, maybe, maybe we look at other sources too. Goco, you know, did not fund our pool project. They don't fund a lot of pool projects. Um, so Goco potentially could be interested in this project. So, so we're, we're gonna have to just do some more strategy on who to talk to about granting for this, cause it is gonna need some grant funding to come to fruition, so. Yeah, so we'll, we'll, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll open that, that door up to other, other granting sources too at this point, so.
You got Chacos? Okay. Um, all right. Our internal, sounds so official, doesn't it? Internal business. Okay, well, I think the biggest thing that we're all kind of getting used to, uh, well, I don't know, I am. Erica's, is the, you know, the change in our, um, the year of when people are getting appointed and what all's happening and our master calendar in relation to that. So I'm really glad you're here, Patrick. Because, um, uh, we have one position open, uh, a voting position. And then our youth commissioner position is open. And I know, I hope Drew is gonna be reapplying. And of course Liza is going to be moving on to college. Um, but, um, we, as I understand it, we need to, and I guess I could be, I could be directing my question to you too. Anyway, um, we're gonna, I guess all the commissions will be opening, whatever they're, you know, announcing their positions that are open and then applications taken. And when is all that advertising gonna take place? Do you know?
It'll be, uh, the second week of April, we're looking to have the boards and commissioners open house to invite everybody here to kind of, uh, meet with individuals and staff liaisons from all the boards to kind of drive up interest. And then looking to, uh, have, um, appointments in, uh, June for those, for those new positions.
They're gonna be, they'll be active already at the June meeting. So, um, yeah, um, okay, it, but is there gonna be, are there gonna be ads in the paper? So, because I think the trustees appoint in May.
Yes, that's correct.
At the end of May?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, when, okay, when in April is that? Do you know the open house?
Uh, so I'm planning that, uh, open house, uh, this week. And I'll make sure all that information, uh, gets sent out to the boards for sure.
Okay, okay. Um, as far as the applications go, are all the boards using the same application? Is it the one we've been using? Okay. Do you need a copy of that, Drew?
Nope, I'm set.
Okay.
So everybody reapplies?
No, no, we're on a stag, we're on staggered terms. So you all were appointed last year. So you have one year under your belt, so you got two more to go. Yeah, so, um, and then our first, yeah, our first meeting as a new board then takes place in June. Which is our.
It's a good way to introduce a new.
It is.
New members, cause we do our parks tour, so.
Well, that's why we kind of.
I was gonna say, can attest, that was my first month before all this process happened and it was one of the best ways to figure out what we do, so, yeah.
Well, and I mean, our, um, you know, our commission was one of the ones that drove this whole thing of changing the dates and stuff like that. And then they went like, oh, we gotta get everybody on the same schedule. Yep, yeah.
There, there will be, uh, um, the training for all the, uh, boards and commission members, not just, um, new members, but, uh, present members are encouraged to attend as well, just kind of a refresher.
No refresher. It's, it's, it's new. We, which is well-needed too. So I'm so glad that's moving forward too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yay. Okay, so otherwise, I think, um, I understand then, when, do we know when the, the application is gonna close?
Um, I'll, uh, circle back with you.
Because if Drew's the only one that applies, then I know it's one process that we, I mean, I think I would, I go to the meeting with the trustees and one other person. No. Or is that when there's multiple people? I don't know. I'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
There's multiple position for one, multiple applicants for one, one vacancy.
Yeah, okay. Otherwise, we can just.
Accept, yes.
Just send it up to you all.
Or whatever, they get accepted by the trustees, right?
Okay.
And then, but what about Liza? Do, is there any?
Oh, that's what we wanted, I wanted to ask.
Is there anybody interested that, have you talked to anybody or do you want us to help you with some materials to talk to people or?
I was thinking, like, the ways that it's been advertised in past years, there are a couple of people I was thinking of just talking to who might be interested in. Um, Molly's actually one of them. I don't know if she'd be interested. Um, I don't have her phone number and I know, like, it's kind of hard to get in contact with her right now.
I'll give you, I'll get you her email.
Okay, perfect. Um, just cause I know she's interested in government. Um, then there are like a couple of other juniors I was thinking of. I can approach them and talk to them. And if that doesn't work, I can also move to like put something in, like, our school has like an announcement slideshow, which like homeroom teachers are supposed to go through with their classes. Um, and I can put something in there with, about it too, so. Yeah. Like, homeroom teachers are supposed to go through with their classes, um, and I can put something in there with about it too, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just let us know maybe by the next, next meeting if if uh if there's some people that are interested and we can. Get them an application, so.
Yeah, I can um, I'll probably put my email in there, and if they are like interested, they can email me and I can forward them the application.
Okay, you still have a copy of the application?
I think I can, I can find it.
Okay, well, just otherwise, let me know when I can send it to you.
I will do that, yeah, there, I mean, there are a couple of people. I just thought I would reach out specifically to the people that I, like, I don't know, anticipated might be interested before I open it up to like. More general population, so, yeah.
Let's see, um, is there a way you all can promote too? Because I know other commissions, I think, are have youth people on there? Or they want to um to let them know about the open house then?
We can post it in announcements if I have a list of commissions, if you just forward me a list of.
Patrick?
No, just, yeah, just, just to add, there will be um, uh, as in the so for sun, but then we also will be doing like a big social media blitz as well to try to um. With the paid sponsorships to really uh cast that net pretty wide to uh get get a good number of applicants.
Okay. But some way of encouraging the the youth to get involved. The youths. The youths. Our young adults. Yeah, okay. Anyone else have anything on any of our business? Any of our business?
Does it have to be for the youth, do they have to be a um, like, what could it be?
Oh.
No. Yeah.
The only thing. Okay, the only thing I'm not sure about though is what about where the living, the um, two, we're only allowed to have two commissioners that are outside of town proper. And right now, that's both the youths. So I don't know how that falls for.
Uh, is there stipulations on the on the youth too that?
Yeah, it's, it's the composition of uh, out of town or folks that don't live in town is already filled, then they would have to.
They have to live in town, okay.
Now, there are a lot of CRMS students though that live in town, so I guess it could be promoted that way too. Yeah. Mm-hmm. At least for this commission. It's so complicated. Okay. Anything else on that? All right. Updates.
Um, so I just want to update you, here's where my mind was before, so on the Crystal River Restoration Project, so. Um, we uh, Monica signs, who is producing those signs, um, will be mobilizing um on Monday, the seventeenth. To start to install those signs. They have, they have that kind of two-week turnaround before the um. Where they can, you know, do some construction down there on 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 site and install all these signs. Um, because the the park is open to the public on the fifteenth, the Bald Eagle closure is over, and so um. But the uh migratory bird act starts April first, so they have a little two-week window to get get this work done, and they're they're actually hitting it, so. They're gonna be on onsite Monday and start to install those signs. I'm really excited about it because the signs are amazing. And the educational experience you're gonna get by just going to a park is gonna be amazing, so. Um, really excited about wrapping up really that project um with the the signs, so.
But the, uh, it does the park have to close again for the migratory bird, or is it just?
No.
Um, it's just for working in there?
Yeah, you just have like construction projects.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, and ripping out of.
I mean, I, I would think that would be kind of the point, would be able to see the migratory birds.
Yeah, so it uh, yeah, so super excited about about that that project, uh, you know, we did. Let RVR know that this was happening and made sure the neighbors know it's happening too there, so we, everything's uh looking pretty good on that one, so. So, yeah, I'm pretty excited about it. Um, for Margaret's job, we had twenty-six applications.
Wow.
Um, we read through all those and have five um scheduled for interviews, so. Um, those are all taking place this week, so we had our first one today, we have one tomorrow and three on Friday. So we'll have more information uh next time we we see you guys on what what happened with all those, so. Um, but we have some good, good quality app applicants, and so, yeah, we'll see how how the process goes here um after this week.
Margaret too, are you involved with them?
Oh, yes.
Awesome, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, Margaret and our hiring committee is really, you know, our coordinators, you know, people that are gonna be working directly with this person, so. Um, yeah, so we we have a good process set up, and hopefully we'll be able to uh have some consensus on. Who uh who's who's the next Margaret, so. Wonder what else we got here. Um, really, as far as for everybody, I did include our thirty, sixty, ninety, I think, yeah, those were the big things I really wanted to to talk to you about. Um, yeah, and then we're we just, you know, we're working on some some projects. Um. Yeah, they're all all in that in in that, so, yeah, those are the ones I just wanted to let you know where where we're we're sitting on, I think I'm, yeah, I think I'm done.
Um, you know, Eric, one thing I know that we've had on here for a while regarding RVR and the weed management program. Do we, I mean. Have we had communication with them or what, you know, are are they willing to kind of look at some of those things or? They're a private entity and they get to do what they want or?
Well, they they do, you know, um, maintain uh two public parks, so, so we have asked them to adopt our. Integrated Weed Management Plan on those parks.
Yeah.
Um, they've kept the um ability to. If they have an infestation of, let's say, Canada thistle, um, and they get complaints from their homeowners to to do something about it. And so we're trying to show them that there's other ways to do something about that than the use of pesticides, so.
Yeah.
Um, thank you, you did bring up some, I was meant to, it was on the top of my list here, that I was meant to talk about, so the Carbondale Integrated Weed Management Plan is going to the E-Board on Monday. And for them to take a look at it, it'll go to the trustees um next. Uh, the the second meeting of this month, Tuesday, the twenty-fifth. Yeah, so, and that'll be um for, you know, Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, um, the Integrated Weed Management Plan. You know, its final form for approval will go um to the trustees, uh, you know, then we need to get it approved, we were, we were, you know. Trying to get it to maybe link up to the V-CAPS presentation too, because they are somewhat intertwined and related, but. Um, but the V-CAPS needs a little bit more work that that uh, that the time, timing of it's not, the timing's not gonna be there to do the work. The V-CAPS to present them at the same time.
Hmm.
So we're gonna present uh the Integrated Weed Management Plan, then the next meeting would be probably the V-CAPS presentation, because they are integrated in in some ways, but. Um. You know, but we need to get the Integrated Weed Management Plan um in front of the trustees and approve, do that in front of, because we're gonna start implementing it. Um, and we don't want to wait till April, so we're already uh, you know, we're already, you know, um. Doing some of the things we do, because we've had some warm weather.
Mm-hmm.
To our parks, and we're gonna be testing out a new uh organic fertilizer that's uh, you know, it's gonna be a part of our process of. Of the whole Integrated Weed Management Plan is to enhance your soil health, right, so, so this is a fertilizer that uh that that does that naturally, and so. So we're gonna give it a, do some test plots and give it a, give it a try, so we want to get it approved, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, Margaret? Are we all gonna start crying?
Um, so we had the last puzzle in Pi night.
Oh, which was awesome.
Sixty-seven teams, there are some uh puzzles still up for sale, and thanks to our workers, Brian, I've been. Trying to get the puzzles put together and in frames and up, so that's our new, so if you look above the front desk, we have the last four years, so we'll keep adding.
Oh, that's great, that's a great idea.
That's what those are, I can. Yeah, it's not from a farmer.
Let's go.
Okay, that's cool, great idea, great idea, I love it.
Um, we had, uh, so sixty-seven teams, it was a great event, hopefully it just keeps holding steady around that sixty to seventy, it fills the space, it was so fun. I think the highlight of the night for me was when the entire gym started singing Sweet Caroline.
Yeah, that was fun. It was a great playlist.
Yeah, I and Parker was so excited to put it together, so it's just, it's been really fun to like actually participate in it and see that it's gonna continue. Um, I did an older adult talk at Sopris Lodge just to promote our senior trips. Um, and then we had the fashion show, and it was the first year, I don't think anybody passed out, and we didn't have any incidents.
Whoa, well done.
Yeah, it just happened later on in the night, not in our facility.
Yeah, we did have some issues with their takedown this year, I think it was just like the standard third year, you 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 have two great years, so you kind of rest on your laurels and. Um, so we had a few, a few issues upon closing that we're gonna talk, we we've already, Jamie and I have already talked about it, so it was, it's no deal. Um, we have uh the light replacement was done just before the fashion show, or the puzzle.
It's made a huge difference.
Yeah, it looks great in there, so I am just warning you all, and Eric knows, I'm going over budget for um, for our building maintenance this year, so just so you all know.
Okay, will you get some more, get some more indoor cycling?
Yeah, because we also had, uh, we had the light, uh, we had the light replacement, we had the finer, so we had to had to do the emergency backup fire panel replacement. Um, we got the new floor scrubber in, so they're all things that we actually absolutely need to do to the facility. And then some of them are, you know, like, we've been wanting to do for nine years and so, yes, I am, my last year, be like. Um, we have the fire panel, and then like the.
Yeah, go for it.
Exactly, the lighting panel has like two strips, and so we had to call somebody else, so, um, to do that. The good news is, is the floor scrubber was like four thousand less than than the quote, so.
I wondered if that was a new one, I saw Erica using it the other day, it was like this Zamboni machine for like gym, it's like.
It is so, it is so nice.
I said, that looks new.
Yeah, it's new, the other one, we were spending like three thousand a year on repairs, and so we, um, and this one's bigger, and we can do the whole gym in half the time of the old one.
It's so nice.
It was nice. Um, other things that uh that we're excited about, that we've been working on this year, and we finally think we have solved. Um, we are finally doing credit card refunds, so we're saving town staff time, which is really nice. Um, so we can do refunds for damaged deposits and other stuff, so that's nice. Uh, youth hockey and broom ball went out with a whimper this year, like two or three weeks shy of what we would normally do. Um, and then adult volleyball is over, but we are doing essentially the next three weeks just to drop in adult volleyball. So if you want to go play volleyball, you can go in Monday nights. Um, so ongoing youth climbing is still going on, early release cribbage, uh, mahjong game nights, drop-in basketball is still happening, come support game night. On the second, it's the second Friday of the month, it's in the activity room, it's just bring your favorite board games or whatever you want, and then it's just a group. Um, so Brian's trying to get that off the ground, he goes to the um Glenwood Library, does the first Friday of the month, so, and then I think the salt does one, so we're trying to add one here of just, you know.
What time is it?
It's uh from anywhere from five-thirty to nine, you can drop in at any any time. It was my husband and I and Brian and his wife. And we had the best time on Valentine's Day, it was, it was super fun, yeah, she had a really, really good time. Um.
Yeah, who won, that's right.
Oh, Quinn had us play this game called Kingdom Builders that he's been playing online for three years, so he taught us to play, so.
Oh my gosh.
And we only got like one round of cribbage in, and then I I beat Brian, and then we played, I forget what else we were, we played. Uh, winter cycling will go on through mid-April. Um, and then the other thing I've, we, Eric, uh, Will and I have been working on, uh, we're gonna, we haven't done brochures in a long time. Um, they were kind of, they got to the point where it was just, it was a lot of paper, a lot of them got thrown away, um, so. And then a lot of the information changes, and we don't post things until a month out, so we're gonna try an annual postcard mailer, so you'll just get one large. Postcard in the mail, and it has lists like all of our typical events, and then when um programs are gonna open.
Registration.
For registration, so um Will's been working on that, so hopefully we'll get it to the printers. It was supposed to be this week, maybe this week, um, and then I gotta go figure out how to get it mailed out. Um, but in that regard, Eric and I are both gonna be gone next week. So the rec center's being, everything's being run by um next week by Erica and Will and those guys.
What do they say, the asylum is being run by the patients?
Yeah.
Inmates.
The inmates, yeah. Um, the other thing that I have been kind of worked on before I get out is all of the forms updated, so all of our rental forms, so I'm working on field and ice hockey rentals, but. All the other forums are now posted on the website and special events. Giving him the stink eye, it's in his court now. Patrick is gonna take over, if it's not at the rec center, Patrick is gonna take over coordinating the special events paperwork, because most of them have alcohol. And most of them have to talk to directors more than just Eric, so it's supposed to be circulated through all the directors, so. Um, we made that decision that the special events forums are now gonna kind of go um on that direction, just because there's a lot of legal stuff that goes in 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 town ordinances and stuff.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so we made the agreement that we took over park rentals and he took over special events.
Okay.
Um, and then I wrote down seniors, but I can't remember why. Oh, senior trips.
Seniors, having a senior moment.
So they did, they had two back-to-back real quick, the art museum, um, and so, and then um, they're, they are gonna continue to do, I think that. They're gonna do Palisade, we're gonna do Palisade next month, um, so it's like a wine and honeybee festival is what it is. And then the one after that is gonna be, um, we do a trip to the nurseries, so we take both vans and people can go to, we go to the local nurseries and. Um, up and down the I seventy corridor. So those are, those are upcoming, and then upcoming, so we already touched a little bit on spring into wellness for First Friday. Um, so not only do we have the pool booth, but we have the rec center open for all of the wellness coordinators, and we work with um Rita Marsh coordinates all of those. Um, we'll have, we're gonna, we are gonna, we have been continuing, so we have a Friday field trip, so for, we didn't do one for spring, or, that'll be during. Um, we're not doing one for spring break, because last year we didn't get attendance for kids like camps during spring break, but we like to do, uh, that's a Friday off, so we've been trying to work with the. School calendars to make sure that we schedule some type of all-day trip when the school schooled out. Um, and then Five Point will be coming up, we still, you guys will still have the April eleventh meeting, but five, getting ready for Five Point, we have early release dodgeball next month, it's the only month that we do it. And then all the spring programming will go online, so T-ball, youth baseball, um, and then um field prep will start happening next month, and then the soccer and baseball. Little League contracts go up next month, so we start filling up all the summer fields. Um, and then we also will have regi, register, actually, registrations should be going online if it's not already for the scavenger hunt, so that is coming back this year. And then we have ordered uh three thousand eggs, so we're gonna put eggs in Sopris, um, Miners and Giannetti this year. So we'll have a thousand eggs and then there. So we'll have a thousand eggs and then they're working on the, um, solicitation. So if you have something that you would like to donate and put in an, an egg. So we'll have regular eggs, so we'll have three thousand this year. And then we'll have the different eggs in those three parks that are more hidden. And, and the nature park with dog bones in them with like little prizes. So, and people utilized them last year. We had quite a few people utilize like the rec center one day pass or whatever. Um, so people were really excited about that. It's just a fun, fun event. So we're getting.
So is the scavenger hunt, you're gonna send them to the different parks and they're gonna find the eggs or you're gonna have staff in?
Last year we just did the egg hunt, cause I just didn't have, with the switch, I didn't have the capacity. And somebody who, like Brian's really motivated to do, take over a lot of the events. Um, and last year I just didn't have the capacity to do both, so we compromised and just did the egg hunt. Um, so it's kind of, but we got a lot of good feedback with the egg hunt last year as well. So we have the capacity to do both this year. So we'll have, um, so we'll put out the eggs for people to find and then we'll have the adult scavenger hunt as well. So this year it's bingo. You're gonna go play, you're gonna go find little stamps and, and stamp your bingo card. So, and then, um, the other thing that I just thought we could also celebrate since it's the days of saying goodbye. Is I would just like to publicly also thank, he's not here, but Russell, our parks guy.
Yeah, Russell will be retiring, uh, April first, so.
Oh, I didn't realize it was that soon.
Yeah, and so we did, uh, just for your knowledge, we did a internal hire there to replace him, um, with Jesus Ortiz. Who's been kind of, we've been grooming him for a couple of years, knowing Russell's retirement date. Russell let us know his retirement date a couple of years ago. Yeah, yeah, and so, so Jesus is now in his position and being trained by Russell presently, so. Prior to April first, so that opened up in our parks department, uh, irrigation tech position. So we do have one full-time, um, parks position available right now, so, and that's being advertised, so.
Oh my, okay. Madam trustee, do you have something for us?
I'd say our biggest thing is, uh, we've launched the search for a new town manager. Lauren is retiring as well. And, um, so for that process, it's really run by the trustees and Patrick's helping us with that. It's really a lot on your plate in this meeting. Um, and so we've hired a firm, um, which is pretty typical, that just, uh, helps a recruiting firm. So they're working on kind of our brochure that outlines the position. Uh, one of the things we highlighted, um, one of the reasons I liked this firm was they actually list in their advertisement kind of opportunities and challenges. It's just like what are, what are our next things we're all working on? And so the, um, next master plan I made sure was in there is just, um, uh, having a town manager, at least acknowledging. That's gonna be something they'll need to help you with as well. Um, where that plays in with you guys is when we do get to the point where we bring in candidates, uh, to interview them. Um, we'll have generally one or two kind of community forums or just opportunities to come mingle with them. And so, and that'll be, I mean, most likely like mid to end of May. Um, and so I'll just make sure you guys know about it, cause it'd be great to get, uh, you guys there. Generally it's run where it's like, you kind of mingle, they might introduce themselves super briefly. And then, um, uh, the recruiting firm will have like a little form that you fill out, which is kind of your initial reactions or who your favorite is. Um, and then our goal is to have, I won't say our goal, most likely the way the timeline will go. Is, um, having somebody onboard probably mid to end of June. It'll really depend on if they're leaving a current decision, how much they need to give. Um, and so, uh, it's exactly when that will happen. But it is a good time, uh, to hire other management positions that have been hiring our, um. They're definitely, I think Louisville just hired and they had like sixty-seven applicants. So that's good. The last time when we hired Lauren, it was actually a tough time to hire. I think we only had like twenty or thirty applicants total, so, um, uh, there's a, but there's a lot of people interested, so.
Oh, good. Yeah, cause it seemed like the last time it was a longer process.
Yeah.
So. Right, you had to go back and do it again, yeah. Oh.
Um, but that's our biggest, I mean, we've got lots of other things going on. That's the one I wanted to kind of let you guys know about. Other than checking in on the pool project. Um, we're updating all of our building codes right now. So we had a big session, public kind of hearing last night. Um, uh, and those should be adopted, I think we're aiming for earlier mid-April.
Um, with Lauren leaving, what's happening to the building renovation here? Wasn't she kind of managing that?
Yeah, that'll be on their challenges and opportunities.
Nothing started with that yet, it's.
No, for the electrification?
No, for the whole remodel of the town hall. The door and she wanted some new offices and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah. I don't know where that stands. I'll have to ask her. But maybe it's, yeah, I don't think anything started. Yeah, no, we haven't approved any contracts or anything for that, so.
I did also think, um.
I was there at the meeting last night and I thought Chris had an interesting comment about the ice rink.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if I was saying anything.
Uh, I mean, uh, well, so trustee Kratasek, um. It was mainly to having to do with Chaco's Park and he would love to try and get some shade up there as quick as possible. So like whether that's trying to plant a tree early or what I think would be more realistic is like, actually. If, if we're gonna have a longer timeline of like installing a better shade structure. And his main thing was to, so that it would preserve the ice for longer, um, so. That was really what it was. And he was saying, if we can't preserve the ice, then he felt like it's worth evaluating whether it's worth it to do the ice rink at all.
Any trustee reports, wanna, Rachel, do you wanna update everybody on?
Yeah, I'd have to be too, on vandalism stuff.
Oh, vandalism stuff? Okay, well, yes, I'd like to hear about that, but I was thinking about your Western, whatever that group is called.
At the end of January and I am sorry that I missed the last meeting. Um, the most recent, uh, Boring Fork Outdoors Coalition meeting. Um, it felt pretty similar to the symposium that we were both at, um, as far as the information that was shared and. Um, but I do think there's some exciting stuff in the works as far as, um, the objective for that. Coalition is to have alignment in kind of land managers, recreation departments, um. Agriculture on kind of the important, uh, issues surrounding, I would say, and you can drop in here, but I know. Yeah, okay. Um, but the intersection essentially of recreation and conservation and how the increased use, um. In our valley for the outdoor resources that we have, um, is being impacted by that human use. As far as like the, um, wildlife populations and conservation values and things like that. Um, so, uh, there have been quite, I've, I've received a few different comments and questions of like, where's Carbondale on this? Um, I, I don't know how to answer those. I, I try to, you know, be politely, be happy to relay this to the commission and, you know, just not really give any kind of answer on that. Um, and yeah, just to put that on your radar, I'm not faulting anyone for not being involved. But I, I've just been asked a couple of times, like you're the only person from Carbondale here, even though there's lots of other Carbondale-based organizations. But, um, just to put that out there.
Yeah, and I guess, I mean, the original, um, start of that, which was a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
You know, Carbondale was asked to be a stakeholder or partner. And at that time, the, the, the answer was, we just don't have the capacity to do so. Um, and then, so I, I did get an email saying is, why isn't Carbondale involved here? Why isn't Carbondale up on the stakeholder list and, you know, I'm like, well, we, we have representation.
Right.
And so I threw you under the bus. Yeah, and I said, I said, I think it actually works really well, cause you're wearing two hats. You're representing, you know, the Spring Golds too, which is very important recreational memory for Carbondale and the Valley. And they also sit on this commission and that you can share with this commission, is an advisory commission to the trustees, you know, what, what's happening with that, so.
Yeah.
So I, I think we still have, have, have a, a foot in the door there. I'm not, I don't feel like we're.
I think one of the challenges might be in a, is that, and I think some of this is entered by where the funding is coming from, I think. I think there's, there's a footer in all the stuff that has City Vastin, Picking County Open Spaces Trails, Snowmass Village. But all of those are Picking County organizations. And, and I think funding's coming through the county. It's, I don't know, you might know more than me about that. But, um, I think that might be part of the problem is that the, the visual aspect of like, are the town logo for Carbondale.
We're missing, yeah, no, definitely. When I saw that too, I'm like, we're missing, but.
Yeah, but, um, as far as right now, there hasn't, it hasn't, it's been a lot of information, not a lot of like action items necessarily either. And so I think at this time, I don't necessarily see a need for a change in that as far as town involvement. Um, and I'm still happy to continue representing both organizations.
Okay, and I think that's the best scenario with where we're at presently, so.
Do they, do they want somebody formally appointed to represent the town?
I think that's, yeah, or at least those are the questions of, yeah, um, like a staff person essentially versus, oh, yeah, a volunteer on the commission.
Well, what about, what could a trustee, what do you think they'd be having, cause you guys have decision-making stuff, so they should be.
Or I was thinking we could like officially appoint you.
Right.
Oh.
To represent us there. Cause we have, um, you know, like former trustee Bonnie Kitchen still represents us as a town on a couple of like state. More, um, she's good.
Oh.
Mainly because she's really good at that.
Yeah.
Consider that if we felt like that was important. I don't, I'm not as very clear with the organization, but.
It might have just been the funding upfront. The initial, you know, when they put it all together, that, that town, our, our town said, no, thanks.
Right, right.
Does somebody from Red Hill represent Red Hill or is it Carbondale?
Yeah, um, and that was one of the things that was brought up specifically with like, what about Red Hill? Or, or why wasn't Red Hill in the, they presented a bunch of information. They collected, uh, survey data on use at a number of different, uh, locations. And they were all in Picking County, and so that was the answer for that of like, well, Red Hill wasn't surveyed. Because it's not part of the data collection site essentially. Um.
So Sopris is part of it?
Uh, they didn't do Sopris, they did Arby Kittle, Smuggler.
The Utah State?
Yeah, Utah State University study, uh.
I, I haven't read it, but you know, they brought people in to study.
Yeah.
Were, were they using the trail counter data from those entities though, from Picking County? Cause we have all that data.
Yeah.
And we're happy to share it.
But it was more, um, they were trying to understand like why people go to different trails. Like, uh, and so there, you can arrange why you're here on different categories. So is it like fitness, um, nature immersion? I can't remember the exact, but it was sort of like different values that different trails have. And why are you using that one? And to kind of understand like how people are engaging with different trailheads and things like that. Um, and then also again, times of day. So, which I think is also like with the trail, kind of, you guys can kind of see on Red Hill what the.
Yeah.
Looking at the same types of things. Um, and then, uh, the Utah State University that did the survey collection also shared kind of like what their research suggests on, um. That, that there's kind of a logarithmic curve of impact and use. So if you can narrow people to like, essentially all that's happening on Red Hill is achieving some of these calls. Uh, but if you can kind of combine people to an established trail versus the braided trails and things like that, you're. Or if you have a, you know, an area that already has a high volume of users and you're adding more, it doesn't necessarily change the impact. So like maroon bowels in the area right around that, those trails. Um, if you flood them with more people, it's not actually damaging that much more than the capacity that you already have. But if you're creating a new trail where there wasn't a trail or your erosion and the impact of wildlife. When people are kind of meandering off is much greater and some of those, just kind of formalizing the, the information there. Um, and so that people can use that to influence their decisions about what are some of the high priority areas as far as conservation. And that kind of thing.
It might be neat, Rachel, for you to, you know, talk to Chris Brandt and the Red Hill Council about, you know, the new sign that they put up. And how that is functioning, you know, the, the mud meter sign and.
Right.
And just to see if that's had a, a change in people's behavior, so.
Yeah.
That are spurred on a change in people's behavior, you know, so there, I know that they're, they've, they've requested some data from us. That I've been, having, having that time to put together from our trail counter data. Um, but that's what they're trying to kind of figure out. Is this time of day? Is it, you know, they're trying to figure out, is this okay use or is this, you know, one o'clock on a muddy afternoon, so, yeah.
Ape in Red Hill?
Yeah. Yeah, they have a new, uh, um, yeah, mud meter sign up there that, uh, that hopefully people are utilizing and abiding by, you know? Cause it's saying, don't go here, it's muddy as hell.
Yeah, yeah, I've had, I, there was somebody in, there was, um, in one of my exercises classes, like, oh my God, it's so, it's so great. You know, you could get that far and then turn, you know, you, then you gotta turn around. So she, she was like, you know, she liked it.
I don't know how it correlates, but there was an interview last week on the radio. And I have to think it was the same Utah State professor that probably did the study. I just didn't catch the whole, um, piece talking about that. And you, like Red Hill and Prince Creek are probably the prime examples that should be built into that study. Um, they probably did focus more on the relationship with Picking County. But obviously everyone from Picking County comes down here earlier.
Yeah, our, our numbers definitely show that big spike and when everything else is locked up, yeah.
Yeah.
Obvious, yeah, April, May.
I witnessed it the other day, I was coming in Carbondale, you know, and all the other cars were turning to go on.
Was there any discussion about the, um, the, the new trail? The, that they want to build from Marble to Crested Butte, you know, that, that whole piece up to Red, to McClure Pass?
That hasn't been.
Cause that, the, the impact on the natural environment there has been a big.
Yeah.
Concern about that development?
Yeah, so far they looked at, they showed some wildlife studies and, um. It was interesting, some of the things we talked about were, uh, just the importance of conserve ranches and things like that, private conservation. Um, in the kind of scope of look, like looking at a, a whole map of our watershed and looking at migration, you know, elk migration and things like that. And how much, um, where those public and privately and boundaries are and kind of where there are huge swaths of lands. That is not conserved, that is high priority and just kind of pointing out where some of those features are. Which is interesting, but not necessarily related to town.
We're listed on their website as a member, pending.
Pending.
Pending on the check, right?
That's why they're all last few.
Yeah, it's still pending.
So did you want to tell us about some graffiti?
Oh. I wish it was graffiti, yeah. Uh, yeah. Share, so I think, uh, Spring Gold has a long, and Thompson Creek has a long history of being a popular party spot. And, um, that has posed a number of challenges for us over the years and things that we've had to pay for. Um, it used to be more along the lines of shooting signs and that type of damage. Um, and then over the last year, we've had fireworks in the Port of Potty on two different occasions. Which goes damage, we have to pay the damage deposit. Um, and then this year, something we've never seen before with the new parking lot that we put in last year. Um, we've been kind of phasing out the finishing work and we haven't fully fenced it. And so there, uh, isn't, you can drive onto the trails directly from the parking lot, which is not as possible at our other parking area. And so on four different occasions, we've had cars drive up the trails and. Um, this past weekend on Friday night, we had, uh, a few kids in a car drove up. Um, we've been squeaking by with almost no snow and we have like one really good trail that we do everything we can to protect. And they drove all across that doing donuts the whole way. Um, driving back out, they slid off the trail and got stuck. And so they had to recruit, drive out, hike out.
I was like, how, how can you do donuts?
And recruit help to tow the people out.
Oh, good. So you know who it is.
Yeah. In that process, we did a ton of damage. Um, but thankfully somebody called nine-one-one because they saw headlights on the trails. I got a call and we, uh, with both Picken and Garfield Sheriff's deputies, we met the kids as they drove out of the trails. On early in the morning on Saturday. Um, so they're gonna, we're still kind of deciding. Is for our board, how uh, what our response to that will be and what their consequences will be. Um, that is separate from then the, that night. So Saturday night, there was another party in our parking lot and kids decided to incinerate the port of Potty. And so they burned piles of pallets, which are full of nails, which is not a good thing to have near a parking lot. Um, and then the part, the, I don't really understand how it burns, cause it's all plastic. But it was, it just a puddled pool of melted plastic. And you didn't, we couldn't even figure out what it was until we like peeled the layer off and you could see the Colorado State Services logo on the back of it. Like, oh, this is our port of Potty. So we're still chiseling some of the plastic off of the parking lot. And we don't have, we have cameras out on the trails. Um, we are going to be putting cameras in the parking lot. And fencing and uh, that is. Uh, yeah.
Night, and you guys are closed for the season.
We're closing for the season tomorrow.
Yeah, I heard that on the public radio.
Hopefully that will, everything will be all locked up and we won't have to worry about it for.
Still.
A while, but it's disappointing.
The trails, did they like put ruts in them? Where are you gonna have to get them regraded and all kinds of stuff and?
Yeah, the one spot where they did the most damage, I think we're gonna have to do, like get a bulldozer and then fix it. Um, the other parts, it was more just damage to the snow and pulling mud into the snow, which then it melts faster. Extra hours for our staff to go smooth it all out so that it's a ski experience we want people to have.
That's too bad. The U two.
Need to find different places to do what they wanna do.
I don't know, maybe, maybe we should torture them and make them be on the Parks and Rec Commission. They'll have to come sit here for two hours, what's a month, in the corner.
To write an apology and put it in the papers.
Oh, good.
With their names. I like public shame. Oh my gosh, okay.
Yeah, I tried to dig today too, I could find it.
Might have had some inside scoop for us. Oh my gosh, okay.
Does your classmates smell like thick plastic smoke? Salt as we're driving, I told my friend Oliver, cause he uses Spring Golds a lot too, and he was like, we're looking in the parking lot. What suburban has mud on it?
That's great. Okay. Anything else, anybody?
I make a motion to adjourn.